Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Lebanon City Council meeting, June 8th, 2021. Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer?
Here.
Mrs. Monroe?
Here.
Mr. Shoup?
Here.
Mr. Matthews?
Here.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Please stand for the invocation and pledge.
Good and gracious God, who inspires and gives life to all of us, thank you for bringing us here today in this wonderful city of Lebanon. Guide us as we take the responsibilities, the duties, to be good stewards of everything you've given us, this time, this talent, this all of the graces which you have poured forth. This week, as we remember the honor, the sacrifice of those at D-Day, help us to become better examples in our own lives. Many of us will not be called to those acts of heroism, but in the way we treat our friends, the way we treat our family, the way we treat those in communities, help us to be that courageous example of mercy, of relationship, of your grace, given corporality with our hands and feet, and the good words that we can speak. Guide us tonight as we represent our city, and guide us in everything we do. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to welcome everyone this evening. And if council would first take a look at consideration of regular meeting minutes, May 25th, 2021, and a motion to adopt.
Sub moved.
Thank you. Sir, second.
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
In consideration of work session meeting minutes, May 17th, 2021, and a motion to adopt.
Sub moved.
Sir, second.
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
All right, moving on, very important part of the meeting tonight is certificate of appreciation, acknowledgement of our Lebanon High School graduates who will be entering the military. And we have, we have five students, four from Lebanon High School, and I believe one from Moller, from Moller High School, Lebanon residents. I believe we have two here this evening. We have, is John back here? Is John back here? How about Dominique Parisi? How about Robert Beckman? Caleb Emerson? Come on, come up, please come up, Caleb. Caleb Emerson? The Marines? That is just absolutely outstanding. And are you with your family?
Yes.
Could you bring them up too? Do you mind?
And Robert Beckman is currently in boot camp right now, in the Almena, so he's at Fort Benning right now.
Wow.
Yeah.
We're very proud of you.
Yes, thank you.
Your willingness, I know your family is, to serve our country. And I have a certificate to give you. Present that to you right now. And a recognition of your dedication, commitment, and willingness to serve your country and as citizens in the listing of United States military. Congratulations, sir. Go right around here, together, because I know that they would be honored to do that. Mom and Dad, congratulations. Again, John Beck, National Guard, Dominique Parisi, Air Force. Robert Beckman, Army, Thomas Rotello, West Point. Okay, we have a proclamation for Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Is anyone here to receive that? Okay, what I'm going to do is read this, and then we can...
Get into that.
Yeah. Whereas prostate cancer is the second leading cause of cancer death in American men, behind only lung cancer. And whereas this year approximately 191,930 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States alone. Every year, and roughly 33,330 will die this year from the disease. Whereas in Ohio, an estimated 9,010 new cases of prostate cancer will be diagnosed, and an estimated 2,000 deaths will occur in 2021. Whereas, 1 in 9 men are diagnosed with prostate cancer in his lifetime. African-American men are at the highest risk for the disease with a rate of 1 in 6, and 22% more likely to die from the disease. And whereas, veterans who have been exposed to chemicals and herbicides are at even higher risk for developing prostate cancer. And whereas, education regarding prostate cancer and early detection strategies is critical to saving lives and preserving and protecting our families. Whereas, all men are at risk for prostate cancer, and we encourage the citizens of the city of Lebanon to increase the importance of prostate screenings. Now therefore, I, Amy Brewer, by the virtue vested in me as mayor of the city of Lebanon in the state of Ohio, do hereby proclaim June 2021 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, the city of Lebanon. Thank you. Now, under recognition of visitors, we have a number of folks that would like to speak. And I am going to first bring up Rebecca Stoll, and she is with Neighborhood Bridges. And what I would ask you to do, I know you're here to kind of talk about particular issue that you're doing right now, but maybe, because there's so many people here this evening, to kind of do a little bit of brief education as to what this amazing organization does each and every day, and maybe how more people can get involved.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to do that. My name is Rebecca Stroll, and I live in Lebanon. I'm a very proud Lebanon resident. And I am one of the area directors for Neighborhood Bridges Lebanon. So Neighborhood Bridges Lebanon is a 501(c)(3) charitable organization that advocates for individuals, children, and families that are in need that live in Lebanon, Ohio. So we use a system of community advocates. These are people like city employees, teachers, school nurses, counselors, social workers, child protective services. They help us identify and vet needs throughout the community. Once they identify a need, they bring it to us, and then we reach out to the community through social media and through our website, NeighborhoodBridges.org. And we ask for community members that have the ability to step forward and help us in filling those needs. So we are very fortunate. We launched in January of 2020, and the Lebanon community has been very receptive and very supportive. So today, I'm here to share with you that we are hosting a personal care products donation drive on Thursday, June 24th, at Market 640 in Lebanon, Ohio. So I mentioned those community advocates, and advocate reached out to us and let us know that there is a significant need of students and families that don't have the ability to purchase personal care products. As you can imagine, this is something that goes, you know, something that we don't even think of as an everyday need. But this is something that not having access to can absolutely destroy the physical and mental well-being of not only a child, but the family as well. So we're asking for donors that have the ability to donate, to package an entire personal care product bag. So we're asking for full-size, we appreciate the travel size, but realistically, when you don't have the ability to purchase these things on your own, full-size products do go further. So full-size body wash, shampoo, conditioner, toothpaste, and toothbrush for ages 3 up to adults. So it's really important that individuals that want to donate, if you can pick an age group between 3 and 5, maybe purchase a toothbrush for a 3-year-old. So it's a little bit more difficult for a 3-year-old to handle a big toothbrush. And again, this is something that can improve the mental and physical well-being of our Lebanon residents. So June 24th, Thursday, at Market 640 in Lebanon, Ohio. And city council, you guys have been so supportive of all of the charities in Lebanon, especially Neighborhood Bridges, and we appreciate it so much. And my challenge to you today is to attend the Personal Care Products Drive. It's a huge help for us. If you can come out, bring one donation, one bag of a personal care product item. And also, if you could reach out to your supporters. Share it on Facebook, text a friend, email your friends or businesses that you think may be interested in supporting this cause. Because like I said, there's a significant population in Lebanon that can't afford to purchase these things, so it's an important need to fill.
Great.
Thank you.
Anytime on the 24th, it's like all day, just drop by?
It's between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. So it is a Thursday afternoon, so we wanted to open it up to, you know, maybe you're just driving home from work, and then those individuals that work a little bit later. But if you miss the 5 to 7 window, we'll have a bin. We also have a bin at the Countryside YMCA there, one of our donation centers. So you can drop it off there, or at Market 640. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alicia Lipton, who is the Main Street Director.
Good evening, council. Very quickly, just want to give kudos and a thank you for allowing us to put on the bike criteria this past weekend. We had 253 riders and received many, many positive comments from those individuals coming to Lebanon. Scott, the city did amazing. Everything from putting up snow fencing to police and fire assisting people who had a little bit of tumble on the bicycle. So again, thank you for letting us put that on here. Next, we have our next big event coming up, back-to-back. So we have our Country Music Fest coming back. This year, it's two nights, or actually two days. It's Friday night from 6:00 until 10:00, and then Saturday at noon until 11:00 p.m. And so in order to put on these events in Lebanon, not only is it our merchants and our city department, it's also volunteers. So with that, I'll ask all of you to share with your friends and family the need for volunteers, and I will ask all of you if you would like to volunteer. We do have volunteer information on social media, so you can copy that and send it on. If there are people here that can't access social media for one reason or another, feel free to give me your phone number, your information, and I can help people get signed up. But we're excited that we have the summer, that COVID restrictions are behind us, and just appreciate the city letting us bring these people in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to say, I heard great things about your organization to pull off the event from last weekend. Heard lots of positive comments while we're coming back to this great city we've never been a part of before. So I really feel that it was a great event, a very different event for the city, but brought a whole different group of individuals, again, families that had never been here before and seemed to really like it, received a number of emails as well. So kudos to you and your organization for making that happen. Look forward to the Country Western Festival, and more individuals coming in and supporting the city. So next, I will bring up John Nolan, please. Hi, John. Just as a point, make sure, state your name and address for the record, and thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you. May your members of council, my name is John Nolan, 1325 Lance Court, Lebanon. I'm here to speak in opposition to the abortion ordinance you all enacted the other day. It was a wrong decision. The duty of any city council is to oversee its community, period. The city council should concentrate on things like maintaining streets, parks, the water and electricity systems, fire and police services, such things. Instead, you all chose to make a wildly inappropriate political statement and oppose your personal and religious beliefs on the city and the residents herein. Your own ordinance notes that there's no abortion facilities in Lebanon, nor are there any plans for them. Yet you still enacted the ordinance. What you've done is basically guaranteed that the city of Lebanon is going to spend thousands of dollars in legal fees to defend what is indefensible ordinance. It directly conflicts the 1973 Supreme Court Roe versus Wade decision. You will lose in court. We'll spend a lot of money that should go to city services. Do us all a favor and vote immediately to rescind that ordinance and save us a lot of money. Or if you refuse, then each and every one of you should make a promise on the record to reimburse the taxpayers of Lebanon for every dollar that will be spent in legal fees wasted on this case defending an indefensible ordinance. Just do the right thing, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Rotts. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me speak here once again. I'm kind of an oddball duck, I guess, because I never really quite talk about what's exactly going on. There's issues that are important to me, and sometimes I just don't know where to start. So I came, started coming here because this is a public forum where city representatives, where hopefully, maybe a person, two or two could hear me as well. But one of the biggest concerns I have in our community is not just the, you know, the things that we look around and see, but things like election integrity. I'm very concerned about the election and the integrity of our machines and equipment here in Ohio. From what I understand, I haven't heard any city officials on any level actually acknowledge that there was actually voter fraud committed in the state of Ohio. And I think that's primarily because, you know, most Ohioans are Republican, we are a red state, so therefore, a lot of Ohioans feel, well, we won, so why look into it? But the reality is, it's been proven, at least in a couple of different ways, that there has been manipulation of the voting machines. And I would urge all of you to consider, if you haven't heard anything about all the election fraud going on in all these other states, Arizona, Georgia, Michigan, New Hampshire, they have proved that it is out there. And I would just like people to pay more attention to it and possibly push to at least acknowledge it did actually happen at some city level. Maybe we can get the more higher levels to acknowledge it, all the way up to the Secretary of State. The Secretary of State did have an appointment to meet with Dr. Frank and sent a bunch of his lackeys with him instead of meeting with him in person like he was supposed to do. So it just kind of pushed under the rug. But he has proven in Pennsylvania, Ohio, and other states that there has been election fraud in this state. And I just don't know what else to say about it, except for thanks for listening, and I hope that there are other people in this room that feel this way besides just me.
Thank you, sir. Josh Beckman.
Good evening, council members and guests. My name is Josh Beckman. I live in Lebanon, Ohio. First off, I want to thank you for passing ordinance 2021-053, which provides that no facility is allowed to open up and perform abortions within city limits. I would like to address some of the pro-choice statements that I've heard in the past couple of weeks. One I heard, no uterus, no opinion. Well, if you're allowed to self-identify as any gender you so choose, you don't have to have a uterus to be considered a woman. Please note, the only reason why you're allowed to have an abortion in the United States in the first place is because men on the Supreme Court said you could. Remember that. Also, I make the argument that if men have no say in abortion, then men shouldn't be required to pay child support. By that statement, I call on all parents to face accountability for their actions, as all actions have consequences, especially after having sex. There is an argument that brain-dead individuals can legally have their plug pulled, even though they have a heartbeat. So what is the difference between a brain-dead individual and embryo? I'll tell you, you cannot compare brain-dead individuals to embryos, as according to the National Institute of Health, brain-dead means having irreversible loss of consciousness. If there was a possibility that the individual could regain consciousness, no doctor could legally pull the plug. Unborn babies are most likely to gain consciousness in the future, starting at the moment of conception. They never lost consciousness and are not brain-dead. My body might choice rights, right? Poor births believe that because it is your body, you should have the decision of murdering your unborn child. No, you as a woman do not have two heads, 20 fingers and toes, four arms and legs, and two hearts. The body inside of you has his or own separate DNA, unique, and was formed at conception. A beating heart is formed at 18 days, brain waves are present at 6 weeks, at 8 weeks, fingers and toes are formed. The majority of abortions that are performed are done by 9 weeks pregnancy. A baby is a parasite, right? Well, that is a claim that is false. Babies are not parasites, as parasites feed off the mother and try to kill it. A baby does not. It should be illegal for, it should be made illegal for the release of male bodily fluids. This is a false equivalency fallacy. Male bodily fluids are only an extension of themselves and is only their DNA. The unborn baby that dies due to a natural miscarriage or an abortion has its own DNA that is separate from the mother and father and is therefore a separate and unique white form. Abortion is a constitutional right, correct? This is farce, a farce, because the Constitution never mentions abortion. In fact, abortion is extremely unconstitutional, as it deprives the unborn from life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. When Plessy versus Ferguson was enacted, should we have been compliant with that slavery? Should we have been accepted of the slavery because it was considered the law? We had 9.453 million whites in Ohio and 1.467 million blacks in Ohio. In 2019, 9,015 reported whites, white babies were aborted, and 8,374 black babies were aborted. It's a wonder that black women make up 6% of Ohio's population, yet commit 41% of the abortions across the state. Planned Parenthood, I call on you to denounce racism of your founder, Margaret Sanger, instead of hosting celebrations such as Margaret Sanger Day, and take Planned Parenthood out of our black communities.
Make your final comment. Thank you.
Yes. I leave you with this, with some disheartening quotes from Planned Parenthood's founder. Colored people are like human weeds and need to be exterminated. We need, we do not want word to go out that we want to exterminate the Negro population. Thank you.
Thank you. Cara Mafalata. Did I do say that?
You did.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cara Mafalata. I live on Hunter's Ridge Drive in West Chester Township in Butler County. So I do not live in Lebanon, yet I have friends in Lebanon. The first time I attended your council was two weeks ago when you passed the ordinance. I came here to say thank you so much for having the courage to stand up in the face of adversity when so many are screaming that this is not okay for you to do, when it was the right thing to do, every one of you. I want you to know how much it means to me. I'm a mom. I have five children. I'm about to have my fourth grandbaby on Thursday. And when I think of how easily women are to say, that's not part of who I am, it is completely untrue. And I wanted to say to the men on this council, I listened to the people last week speak to you. And I listened to a lot of the women say that you had absolutely no right to be in our body or our business. Well, that baby would not be there had it not been for a male, for a man. I watched my daughter lose her second child last May. And my son-in-law, it took him months to get over the pain they went through. So that was very much his child as well. So basically, all I really wanted to let you know is, I thank you. I appreciate each one of you, even though I do not live here and I wish I did. And I am going to do whatever I can to try to change West Chester Township. It will not be any easy feat, and it won't happen anytime soon, but we're all going to die trying. Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you. I do not have any other forms, but, okay, anybody? Great. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, do you mind? Thank you so much. I knew there were probably more people to speak, so thank you so much. But sir, you can come on. If you're here to speak, you can come right up.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Richard Drummond, pastor of the Lebanon Baptist Temple. I live on West Warren Street, right by the church. I was in Myrtle Beach when this vote was taken on the Sanctuary City for the Unborn. And I, like I says, in Myrtle Beach, and it made news there. And I'm thankful to this city council for you men and ladies that voted for this. My dad, I am a lifelong member of this city. And my dad was on the planning board committee of this city years ago. And I know he would be proud to hear of what passed here. And it helped, our church was excited about it. Today, I had the opportunity to preach at the Fellowship Baptist Church in town. I mentioned it, and I told them, I said, this is our city that did it. It wasn't your city, it was our city. Thank you, city of Lebanon. Thank you, councilmen.
Thank you. Manuel? Guzman, junior. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for listening. I appreciate it. Manuel Guzman is my name. I'm a 17-year resident of the city of Lebanon. I'm a pastor of a church, and was unable to be here last week because of obligations that took me out of town. I thank you. I want to say thank you for your courage. Thank you for your resolve in doing that which is right. And I realize there are oppositions and what kind of pressure you've been under, I have no idea. But at the same time, it takes courage to do the right thing. And there's opposition, there are those in favor, and it can be a heated issue. But the bottom line is, regardless of where we might stand, we cannot, we cannot come up with a solution to where the end result is different than what it always is when an abortion takes place, and that is a deceased baby. And this, I think, is something that will go to the point to where it's going to benefit the city of Lebanon and the state of Ohio. Scripture says righteousness exalteth the nation. And if good people don't do right things, it's just paper. It's just words on paper. But I want you to know that regardless of what kind of pressure you might get or have to endure, that you've got individuals here that got your back, if you want to use that terminology, and we support you. When you do right, we'll support you, and you did right. And as far as the money issue is concerned, the love of money is the root of all evil. And it costs to do right, not just money, but in other areas as well. So thank you, from a citizen. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Zachary Bruno?
Good evening. I am Zach Bruno, and I live in Loveland, Ohio. But I will tell you, I am moving to Lebanon, Ohio very soon. I want to say thank you all for your courage. I'll echo what's already been said. I'm a professor at a community college. I have been a full professor for about 10 years now. I've sat on many commissions and boards and citizen advisory groups, and I've noticed that most of them are comprised of self-advancing, ambitious individuals, usually lawyers. And what I've found is that this council, fortunately, even if there is an attorney among us, is admirable and has done right. And I just want to say thank you. It takes courage, it takes guts. I've run into a lot of spineless people, but you are not that. I'm interested in encouraging you by just letting you know that I attend Antioch Church here in Lebanon every Sunday with my wife, Catherine. And we've actually also... And we've actually also been attending a daily prayer session. It's a church that meets in the countryside YMCA. And we've been praying for our elected officials, our president, our vice president, governor, and our city council members, we've been praying for you by name. And we've been doing this since November of last year, when the election took place. And so you're in our thoughts and in our prayers. And it may mean something to you, it may not, but I believe in the power of prayer. And we thank you all for what you're doing. I just want to encourage you to stay strong, continue to be courageous, and appreciate you serve in our community. I look forward to paying taxes in this city soon, to patronizing businesses more in this city soon. And I have other friends and family members in California who are seriously considering moving to Lebanon, Ohio. What you've done is fantastic, and I just want to say thank you for that. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Good, good evening, welcome.
Hi, I'm Rick Napier. I live here in Lebanon, I live on 109 Hickory Lane. Been in the city for sixty years, and in the township area for about forty. So I'm no, not new to this area. But I can tell you this, I left here two weeks ago after this, after you forwarded on the ordinance unanimously. And I was so impressed, and I was so thankful to be part of the city of Lebanon. It's, it's, I don't know what I could say to accomplish anything different than what you have right now, but I just want to thank every one of you individually. I look in your eyes, and I see that there are people who are compassionate people, who, who love the unborn. You know, abortion is murder. And I don't know how you can even come to the conclusion of anything different than that. You know, when, when we were younger, when I was younger, I actually not even think about the right or wrong of abortion. But somewhere along the line, I get pretty smart every year that I live. And I think most of us have done that, our parents. You know, we grew up in a time when we thought our parents were, they, they had, they must have came from the moon or something, because they were not very smart people, we thought, as young people. But in our twenties, our thirties, we start gaining knowledge, and we start, and there's things that happen in our lives that, that our lifestyles change. And I can tell you this, that I don't think like I did when I was younger. I can tell you that. And, and I'm thankful that I am the age I am now, and I feel like I'm a very smart guy, and as, as like most people in this room, I look at. So I just wanted to encourage you to, you know, there's a lot of people that are so thankful for, for you passing the ordinance. And I don't know the ordinance, I came up here without a speech, I didn't get home until 6:45. I quickly got a shower and came here, because when I, when I knew what was happening. But I just want to let you know that. So thank you, Joe Schaefer, Doug Shoup, Scott Bronco, you don't have, you know. And Mark, and, you know, I've, I've, thank you, Adam, and thank you, Wendy, for doing the right thing. It's easy to go with the flow. It takes people with backbone and guts to stand up and do what's right. And I'm glad I'm part of this town. So thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Matt Morgan. Welcome.
My name is Matt Morgan, I live in Keeneland Estate, and I pastor Fellowship of Praise in Clarksville, Ohio. And as a pastor said before, righteousness exalts the nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. And so I want to thank you. I was in Hilton Head, he was in Myrtle Beach, I'm a South Carolina native. And we learned a few things, yes, sir, no, ma'am, and always say thanks. So I just say thanks for what you did two weeks ago. It was awesome. And I'm going to spend the next two minutes clapping. Thank you.
Um, do we have someone else? Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Brighton Smith, and I live at 903 Meadow Lane, here in the wonderful city of Lebanon. I also want to thank you guys for what you did, passing the Sanctuary City for the Unborn Ordinance. I think that it is courageous, because it's very easy for all of us who have obviously already been born to overlook an issue like this, because I think for us, the danger, as you want to call it, is past. And so I could see where it could be very easy for you guys to look at an issue like this and say that it's not worth the time, not worth the effort. And I appreciate that you guys did do this, and you did believe it was worth the time and the effort. And I want to thank you on behalf of the children who cannot speak for themselves, and also on behalf of my wife. I know that if she was here right now, she has her own story to tell, and I would not even try to tell it for her. But I do want to pass on that she also wants you guys to know that she's very appreciative of what you guys have done. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, um, I have Darryl Blair. Good evening, welcome.
Good morning, afternoon, evening. I want to thank you folks for taking a difficult stand here a couple of weeks ago. I was out of town, saw some things on the news. I'm going to tell you, I've been a, I'm seventy-nine years old, I've been part of Lebanon for that period of time. I've lived within the city, I think it's about forty-five years within the city limits. I've never been more proud of my city council. And it's been a good one over the years, it's been a, we've had a wonderful, wonderful city because of good people like yourselves doing the right thing. Seen some of you grow up, you were a little girl, you were a little boy.
I'm still little.
We're good hands here, folks. A, last week, I had a gentleman's college professor, he's a customer of mine, he gave me a little civics lesson. And he said, "Darryl," he said, "any time that evil, such as the socialism thing that we see taking place, and this abortion issue taking place," he said, "the first thing that you see go is they try to destroy your traditions and your family values. They do that first." Then there were a couple of other things that he went on through. And the very last thing he said that they do is they start killing citizens. Is there a clearer picture than what we see in this abortion issue than that very thing? Destroy the value of a person. Ultimately, go through it, and then you kill them. I want to thank you again. I so do appreciate it, and I want you to know I'm proud of you. And there is a great multitude of people out here who stand behind you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Lori Byers, Spring House Court, here inside the city limits of Lebanon. I was not planning to speak tonight, but another witness said some things that I wanted to address. There have been twenty-nine, well, thirty, there just was another city. Thirty cities now across the United States have passed the unborn sanctuary cities ordinance, just like we have. We were number twenty-nine, but there was another one in Texas this week. Out of those twenty-nine, now thirty cities, there have been eight lawsuits, eight. Every single one of those eight lawsuits has either been withdrawn by the people who filed the lawsuit, or dismissed by the judge. And as I testified two weeks ago, it's because this doesn't really have to do with Roe v. Wade. Fireworks are legal in our country, but a city can ban fireworks. Engine braking, which I don't even fully understand what that is, is apparently illegal in some cities, and I think in Lebanon. But it doesn't mean it's illegal outside the city. So it really doesn't have to do with Roe v. Wade. You can regulate some things inside your city. And so it was good news this past week, the toughest lawsuit was in the city of Lubbock, which is the largest city in the nation that has passed this ordinance. I think it's 230,000 or 240,000 citizens. That one was a little more complicated, because they already had an abortion clinic operating when the, when the ordinance went into effect. So that one was, you know, a little different than the others, but even that one was dismissed. So you don't have to worry about that. And if there is a lawsuit, Lebanon has already been promised free legal representation. And it's not by just, you know, some ne'er-do-well, you know, person who said they'll represent us. It's the former Solicitor General of Texas, which I believe, Mark Urick, you could correct me, is probably like our Attorney General.
Yes, and I would never try to correct you, Lori.
To clarify, Ohio also has its own Solicitor General.
Okay, okay, so, but that is an impressive credential. I may not fully understand it, clearly I'm not a lawyer, nor would I want to be.
Although you have intimidated at least one who isn't.
So we don't have to worry about that. I'm a fiscal conservative as well as a social conservative, and I care about our tax dollars. My tax dollars, you know, I want them spent wisely too. And I thank you all for spending our tax dollars wisely, and for passing this ordinance two weeks ago. Thank you so much, I'm very proud to be a resident of Lebanon, Ohio.
Thank you. Okay, anyone, anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Everyone, good evening. Joe, Doug, Amy, Mark, Adam, Wendy. I'm actually not here to discuss any ordinances about abortion, I feel like that's going to get settled in court, so let's neither here nor there what any of us think about. I am here to ask two, what I find to be very important questions. Number one, I would ask that the city recognize Juneteenth, which is just a week away. I haven't heard anybody from city council specifically speak on the subject, and I think that it's important. It's also a federal holiday now, as some of you may know. So there's no sense in denying that it exists. And I feel like it would be a huge step in race relations for our community, which, as we can all testify, is not very good. The other thing that I would ask is that each of you individually, I know you guys went to an executive session last week, but I would ask that you would each individually, for, as a matter of public record, in the, in the honor of transparency, establish what you feel as the criteria for the job applications for the seat on the internet here. Granted, I knew that you've taken applications, and that's all well and good, and you went into an executive session to discuss that. I understand that there are HR rules in place on that, as far as names and all of that, that'll come to light when you hire the person. But I would ask, for the sake of transparency and to build some trust, because there are people who, let's be all honest, don't agree with any of you. So I think it would behoove all of us, if we just knew from each individual, like, "Hey, I'm looking for this," or, you know, "Doug has been on the record to say that he's a," I'm going to get the order right, "Christian conservative Republican, but I was wondering if that is the only criteria that you're using to hire someone." If we are going to elect just a friend, then let's just do that and get that over with, so we can all move forward. So I would just ask that, I know it's not on your agenda, but I don't feel like it would take you very long to discuss what you feel is the proper criteria, other than what is legally required.
And you know what we can do, you can talk to each one of us individually, that is, individually, as we move into the agenda, and then we are going to, again, to go into executive session to take a look at the applications that we have received.
Sure.
So you can individually, this is, this is not an arena where we share with you what our criteria is. But that is something that anyone in our community can talk to, talk to us about, you included, to be able to do that. So this evening, we are not going to go around the, around the room, asking what our criteria is. That is something that you can talk to, talk to us, about any community member can talk to us about. We just received the applications, and we as a group are going to go in and do some discussion about that as a group, as we are making that decision, okay?
We haven't seen, like, we haven't seen all the applications yet, they're here tonight, and so we'll, I'll look at them for the first time. Next week, I will be, I will personally feel more comfortable sharing my opinions with you.
That would be terrific. And I only ask to do it publicly, that way it's a matter of record, so everyone in our community can know. Like, granted, I have, I'd have no problem calling you and having conversation with you about it private, but why do that private when we can discuss it as a whole, and our whole community can understand where you're coming from? I don't feel like that's a, a big ask or inappropriate. You don't have to do it this evening, I just mean in general. So that would be my, my one request. I guess another would be my question to you is, why not do that for everybody?
As I said, we're not doing it this evening. We're not doing it this evening, we are meeting, we just received the applications.
Sure.
Tonight, we are going to get together as a group to look at them together for the first time.
True.
So that is what we're doing this evening, and as we move forward with the process, we will definitely let the public know the direction we are going in. And as Councilmember Monroe said, we're more than willing to share perspectives in terms of what she's looking for, what we're all looking for, and share that with the public.
Okay, that's all I'm asking for.
I would also say, the, the, the criteria for a council member is written out in the charter.
Yes.
We're, we're going to go through, and we're going to pick the best person that we believe will help lead the city. And our charter explains that explicitly, so.
And then we can read that to you as well, apart from the charter. And like you said, we're going to pick who we think is best. One of the benefits, I think it's, it's unfortunate that we're in this situation, I, I was disappointed at Ms. Wyatt's resignation. But we are in this position, and we have thirty days to appoint a new person. So one of the good things is, the election is coming up, her term, the remainder of her term is not long at all. It's just a few months. So while we will be picking someone to fill the remaining time in her seat, the voters will ultimately decide who they want to fill that seat in November, for the next four years. So I'm glad, at least, since we're in this situation, at least it's not for long, and, and the voters can decide in November.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we are going to go ahead and move on to break. Oh, sorry.
Hi, I'm Veronica Striebel, I live in Clear Creek Township. And I just wanted to mention, since apparently this is on everyone's mind, that I am wholly and, like, really wholly disapprove of the ordinance. The 2021-053, the abortion ban, I think it's highly unconstitutional and out of your lane. One of the other things that I wanted to mention is, community members have approached you guys on Facebook, via city council meetings, with a lot of questions. And I haven't seen any answers to those questions, or if you're planning on answering any community members' questions on this ban.
I know, I personally have responded to every person who lived in Lebanon, or has an Lebanon address and lives in the township, with my view, and I would be happy to restate my opinion again, if you want to hear it, but it's basically what I said two weeks ago.
No, the, the questions are the citizens, not what your opinion is.
Okay.
You know, that's really important, I think, given that you're elected officially.
Did you have a specific question this evening?
Sure, I mean, I could, I could pose a question.
Well, here's the thing, we're not, this is not a question and answer at this point in time. This is just to, to listen. Excuse me?
Thank you.
Also, maybe via email.
That would be the best.
And I probably will, and since you, if you emailed me before, I'm, and if it was, especially if it was one of the form emails, since you're outside the city, I may not have responded, because we did get a, an amazing amount of form emails. But now that that's slowed down, so yours should stand out, if you just send it again, I, I should, I should see it. So I will respond to your questions happily.
I think one of the things that we do not do, and I know I do not do this myself, I do not respond to questions and discussion on social media. To me, that is not an appropriate venue to have a discussion. So if somebody asks me a question on social media, I'm not going to be engaging in back-and-forth dialogue that appears to create a very antagonistic, bullying, aggressive, threatening approach. So if you are interested in picking up the phone and giving me a call or emailing me, I'd be more than happy to answer those. But if answering questions means that there's an attempt to change my mind, or to something like that, that, that's, I'm, I'm more than willing to have a good, honest communication and discussion with people, sharing a different view and perspective. But again, some of the tactics have been very disheartening, and very inappropriate. And so I myself will not engage in that kind of conversation and discussion with anyone. So I'm just going to let you all know, that is not the conversation I will have with anyone. Make that clear. If you email me, and you are disrespectful, and you are abusive, and you threaten me, I will I will not be responding to your email. If you want to have a good conversation and a discussion, I would be more than happy to have that conversation with you. So we're moving on to previous business, number one, ordinance number 2021-.
Before we do that.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Public hearing. Thank you.
You want to read us in, Mark?
Yes, we need a motion to open a public hearing regarding the expansion of the downtown Lebanon Dora.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second. Any objections? Seeing none, public hearing is open.
Great. Mayor, I do have just a few slides I want to try to cover here. So a little bit of background information, Lebanon currently has a Dora Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area. It was established in 2019, and it allows patrons 21 and over to purchase alcoholic beverages and a designated cup from, you know, permitted establishment, and they can carry the beverage then within the defined Dora area. And you can see on the map, that's the currently, the current area that's defined as our Dora. It's essentially what most folks consider our downtown, our central business district. There are nine permitted establishments within the Dora, and it's about 46 acres. This is a process that's, you know, permitted through the Ohio Revised Code. Obviously, it is heavily regulated, both by the state as well as what the city had to go through to establish it, so there are defined Dora hours. Again, it has to be poured in an official Dora cup to be taken outside of the establishment. And businesses have the option to participate in the Dora or not. Just because you're within the district does not mean you have to participate in it. It is 100% the business's decision. And as we established the Dora back in 2019, we put together a public safety plan, signage plan that defines the Dora area, as well as a sanitation plan. So with the expansion of the Dora, none of that is changing, except the actual area itself. So you can see what's highlighted in red represents where the Dora would be expanded through this legislation. We do have two current businesses that have liquor permits that have expressed an interest in being part of the Dora. Market 640, kind of up there at the top of the screen, and Broadway Barrel House. Additionally, we have the 511 North Broadway Development Project, which is essentially right in here, that is going to have several businesses that will want to be part of the Dora. So in response to that, the city's initiated the process of formally establishing the Dora boundaries to what you see on the map, and this public hearing is really the first step in that process. So staff is requesting city council adopt the legislation to approve the expansion of the downtown Lebanon Dora as proposed. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great. This is an opportunity, if anyone would like to come to the microphone and share their thoughts or view about the Dora before we vote, you have an opportunity to do that Then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any injections? Public hearing on this matter is now closed.
All right. Thank you. Previous business, ordinance number 2021-049.
Ordinance number 2021-049 approving the purchase of rock salt from Cargill Incorporated De-Icing Technology Business Unit through the Warren County Engineers' Office Purchasing Program, and the unit price of $72.29 per ton for dump delivery and $86 per ton for piler delivery.
Mr. Brunka.
This ordinance authorizes a city manager to purchase rote salt from Cargill de-icing through the Warren County Engineers' Office Bulk Ice Control Rock Salt Purchasing Program for established unit pricing of $72.29 per ton for dump delivery and $86 per ton for piler delivery. And these unit prices are lower than what we had previously had out, bid out this year.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment?
How often, how often do we utilize the piler?
Not very often. We typically go with dump. I think this past snow season, we did all dump delivery.
And then you guys can move in with, yeah, correct.
Anything else?
No, thanks.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
New business, number one, ordinance number 2021-054.
Ordinance number 2021-054 is an ordinance authorizing the expansion of the downtown Lebanon Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area. I believe this is on for a first reading here.
And Mr. Brunka, anything else you want to say?
No, just as presented in the public hearing.
And so a motion for a first reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Number two, ordinance number 2021-055.
Ordinance number 2021-055 authorizing an economic development agreement with Rise Lebanon Ohio LLC and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This ordinance authorizes a city manager to enter into an economic development agreement with Rise Lebanon LLC in support of the Rise Commercial Development Project, which will be constructed in the city-owned Columbia Business Park.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2021-056.
Ordinance number 2021-056 approving the final plat as recommended by Planning Commission for Miller Orchard Subdivision and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This ordinance approves the wrecker plan and the final plat as recommended by the Planning Commission for Miller Orchard, which combines a portion of 97 East Orchard Avenue with 99 East Orchard Avenue to create a larger single lot for a new garage construction as requested by the property owner.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Number four, ordinance number 2021-057.
Ordinance 2021-057 authorizing the vacation of Right-Away for a section of Cincinnati Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This ordinance approves the addition of language to ordinance 2021-040, which specifically identifies Steve and Karen Creach as a recipient of the section of vacated Right-Away on Cincinnati Avenue. This change was requested by the Warren County Map Room.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
And ordinance number 2021-058.
Ordinance 2021-058 authorizing the refinancing of Series 2021 Water Bonds.
Mr. Brunka.
This ordinance authorizes the refinancing of the Series 2021 Water Bonds.
And a motion for a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion items, city manager, court.
Thank you, Mayor. The next meeting of city council is a work session that will take place on Monday, June 14th. And as Mrs. Lipton mentioned, it is a country music festival this weekend, so we're getting geared up for hopefully another great event in downtown Lebanon. That's all I have.
Okay, I know we have an executive session, so we'll go ahead and do discussion items. Councilor Schaefer, do you have anything to say?
No, thank you.
Mr. Shoep?
Nothing, Mrs. Lipton.
Thank you. Mr. Messer?
Ben?
Yes, sir.
So we had coffee last year around this time.
It was pleasant, wasn't it?
We talked about MLK and you heading up a Juneteenth celebration.
Just for clarification, MLK and myself are two different.
Well, yeah, but I know you're associated with the organization and...
I mean, I attend meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm a part of the organization in that sense. But that's okay, go ahead.
So you are a member or you aren't a member?
No, I attend meetings. I wouldn't say I'm a member. I volunteer and help, but I'm not formally a member, but that's what I'm saying.
Okay, I was just, have you guys planned anything for Juneteenth this year that we can share with everybody?
To, I don't sit on the dore, so I wouldn't be the best person to ask about that. What I can tell you is, as far as Juneteenth is concerned and handle people of Lebanon, they are working hand-in-hand with Springbrough for this first Girl Juneteenth celebration, of which I would invite all of you to attend.
Nice.
They will have a booth there as well. If I'm not mistaken, they're not here today, I can get your clarification, but to answer your question, yes, they are doing plenty of Juneteenth-related activities.
In Springbrough?
In Springbrough, and Springbrough, as the city decided that they wanted to celebrate Juneteenth. For those of you who, is there anyone, for clarification, is there anyone who doesn't know what that is? Shoep, if you're uncertain what that is, clarify. Is that okay?
I was going to read what I posted last year if you want me to, but you can, go ahead. Go ahead.
So Juneteenth, for those of you who are unfamiliar what that is, is after the education proclamation was spoken by President Lincoln, in Galveston, Texas, the slaves were not let know that they were free. So Juneteenth is the celebration of when that message was received through the last school plantation, which is located in Galveston. So while we, as a community, as a country, celebrate things like July 4th as a nation because that's, you know, the birth of our country, the unfortunate value of the situation is a lot of the things listed did not include Native Americans, African-Americans, and particular slaves at the time. So after President Lincoln freed the slaves, there was Slaves' Day, no idea the day had been freed. So Juneteenth is when we recognize June 19th as when the last slaves were told that, hey, you're no longer in bondage. So it is a celebration that's been going on for years, but this is the first time within the past three years that the federal government has decided that we're going to recognize this because it is important. So that's what it is for clarification. You're welcome.
1865 is when that happened. It's known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Liberation Day, Emancipation Day, so, and Juneteenth. So, so thanks for that info.
You're more than welcome to see there.
Definitely.
Councilor, my friend?
Echoing the great comments about the crit race that was here, all of that, please help out at the Country Music Festival. There's many other festivals that are coming as well. We'll have our Blues Festival, we'll have our other events there, and I believe Main Street will also, on their website, have registration for the Declaration of Independence Parade, which is open to families, open to organizations, and for that, so.
How many people did we have in last year? 65? 65 entries?
65 entries, and many of those had dozens of people.
Yeah, that's good.
That's great.
And they're the same rules as they were last year, so.
Okay, yeah, great. I will say that I have a little information on the Juneteenth celebration in Springbrough. So I know it's, I was not part of the decision as to whether to do something in Lebanon or to join in with Springbrough, but I know it's just an organization that's an interesting decision, like, do we do our own thing, or do we just combine our efforts and do a bigger thing? So it's my understanding that a lot of the folks from Lebanon are assisting with the event in Springbrough, which is great. We love Springbrough, too. We can, we're good friends, good friends and neighbors. There are a couple of things. So the Juneteenth celebration in Springbrough is at the North Park Amphitheater. It's from 12 to 8:00 PM on the 19th of June, and I know I'll be there at the booth that you mentioned, from 12 to 3:00, I believe, or 1:00 to 3:00.
I think we'll be there at the same time.
Okay, great. So that is going on. I'm looking forward to that. And Art in Color, which is happening in Lebanon, is an exhibit of black artists, so I'm looking forward to that as well. That is open to the public on the 19th as well. I don't know exactly what time it starts. I think it at least starts by 11:00 AM, but I'm not 100% sure. But that's at Artscape in Lebanon, which is at 7:40 southeast Route 42. So if you head out 42, it's on the right, and that is going on the 19th as well. So I know I will be going by that in the morning before heading to Springbrough. So there's a couple of things going on, which is great. I think joining in with Springbrough is a great thing to do right now, and if the city decides, if the community decides to do something else in the future, that's great, too. But I'm cognizant of people's time and how much they're willing to undertake, so we'll just check out them in Springbrough and I'm looking forward to that. So that is going on the 19th, which is Saturday, which is great. That's all I have.
Great. Were you wanting to say one more thing?
Just quick things. I saw Finwick Men's Volleyball, One State.
Yeah.
So that's wonderful. I know there's people within the city limits that were on that team, so that's great. I'd love for us to be, not to take anything away from Springbrough, make it Warren County Juneteenth Celebration, but...
That would be great.
That would be wonderful. And then, just speaking kindness in our community, whether you agree with us, whether you disagree, we're all in this together, and just, please have that attitude.
So we will go into executive session?